Thirty seconds, Mayor.
Thank you. Lee, you have pledged tonight. I hope you know it. Don't need another one of those debacles.
And now I'm stressed. I hope I don't forget one.
Well, you should be. And good evening. Welcome to the Ameren City Council Workshop for the city of Tonton. This is for September of 2021. We'll begin with our Pledge of the Flag. I'll ask Councilman Hand to lead us in said pledge.
... into land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll start with our roll call this evening. Councilwoman Foster is away. She is attending the Board of Directors Retreat for MML. Councilwoman Fuller is running late. She hopes to be here, she said, by the second half of the meeting. And then also, the city attorney is not able to join us as well this evening. Other than that, we're all here and accounted for. We'll begin with a review of the minutes. These are for the August 4th and August 9th regular meetings. I'll ask council, do you have any changes, corrections, questions to the minutes as presented to you this evening?
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If everyone is satisfied, they will be up for your approval on Monday evening. We have two items this evening for a public hearing. First is the proposed Fifth Amendment to the Development Rights and Responsibility Agreement for Meads Crossing. And second is an amendment to the community village zoning code. So at this point, I'm going to open the floor for the public hearing on the first of the topics, the proposed Fifth Amendment to the DARA of Meads Crossing. Does anyone wish to speak on this topic? If there's any case or questions, Ms. Weeprich, do you want to just run over real quick what that main amendment is there?
Essentially, it allows for storage buildings or sheds of less than 150 square feet, actually, it may be smaller, 120, to be added on single-family dwelling lots within Meads Crossing. Typically, a community village does not allow individual storage buildings. So this would allow single-family dwelling units at Meads Crossing to have them.
Very good. With that knowledge now, does anyone wish to participate in the public hearing and give their thoughts and opinions? Okay. I am going to leave that one open and, at the same time, open up for the amendment to the community village zoning code, which essentially just codifies appropriate amendments in order to make community village allow these.
Correct. That is just enabling so that a project that does have a development rights and responsibilities agreement can request that relief.
Very good.
Question.
Answer.
Is it possible, because community villages typically have smaller land allotted to a unit, to have possibly smaller square feet per shed instead of 120, maybe something like 80?
Are you saying overall or dependent on the size? Because they're still going to be subject to setbacks and items like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So city code still limits accessory buildings to be no closer than five feet to a property line or 10 feet to a street or alley.
Okay.
Possibly as a ratio of, I mean, it'd be great if there was some sort of algorithm for the lot so that, I mean, if someone had something like a 50 by 30 backyard, I would think a 1,500 square foot shed would not be desirable. Granted, that's an exaggeration, but just thinking about that in terms of aesthetics and what the community village, I believe, is going for.
I think the, I see where you're coming from there. That would add a level of complication to it. There are a lot of factors that would have to go into effect there in terms of how far back on the property the house sits. They may have a smaller backyard, things like that. So you almost have to go by a backyard measurement or rear yard measurement, which I feel like could get a little hazy, in my opinion. Historically, all of our shed, excuse me, accessory building code has been just up to this amount and within the confines of the setbacks. Is that correct?
I'm pulling the code up right now.
Okay. Very good. But 120 square feet, it's a 10 by 12 shed.
In the observation from the planning commission, and I don't mean to slide into those waters, was that a lot of those backyards are on the small side and they start to tilt, like, just off a back patio or a small deck. So just thinking about, once again, typically a community village, it's this idea of intimate living, you know, HOA often, at least for a portion of it, takes care. Individual, single-family homes that are up to their own, I get their shed for the sake of lawn care. But I'm just thinking about the aesthetic and the allotted room and what is the goal of granting a community village versus potential for clutter? So anyway.
I see, I see exactly where you're coming from there.
Yeah. Sorry to be difficult.
Nope, not at all.
The code does include a proportion of the rear yard. However, it states that it can't occupy more than 30% of a required rear yard. But unfortunately, the code does not give a, a square footage minimum for a rear yard in a particular district. It gives a setback distance, which is typically 25 feet, for anything attached to the house to have to remain that far from the rear yard boundary. But lots are all different shapes, sizes, widths. There are minimum widths at the street, but not at the rear of the yard. So that required rear yard is somewhat unenforceable.
Okay. I take your point. And I would encourage you, when this comes up to council for final approval, which would be next month, are we doing that Monday, I guess? Because we're doing a public hearing tonight, so I assume Monday it would be up for final approval.
We introduced last month, so we could approve Monday night.
So I think that would be the moment for council to debate that topic. So I encourage you to bring that up again. All right?
Okay, a question.
If you would step up to the microphone, that way everyone on the interweb can hear you as well.
Usually people don't have trouble hearing me. But just as a question, are the sheds still subject to approval by homeowners associations, even if they are allowed by, by this ordinance? And is the city stepping into something there with, and of course Jay's not here, so, you know, is the city stepping into something there in getting into the middle of something with the homeowners association? Well, the city says I can, and the homeowners association says, oh, no, you can't. And then where are we?
The... Go ahead. I'll let you speak to that at that point. I was trying to gather a thought, it didn't come together.
We do, we do run into that issue periodically. Typically, the HOAs are more restrictive than the city code. And we certainly have had instances where we have approved something because even though we encourage people to get approval from their homeowners association before they apply at the city, that does not often hap, does not always happen. And we have had instances where we knowingly have to approve something, knowing that the HOA is not going to be happy with it, because we have to go by what the city code says and not what the HOA says. So the best we can do is advise them, but we don't try to enforce the covenants for the HOA.
I look at HOAs in the same way that we look at the state in terms of, we can be more restrictive with things, but we can't be contradictory or more lenient. And I feel like HOA is really kind of falling into the same, same thing here in the city.
I'm making sure it's taken into account.
All right. Any other public input for the hearings on either of the proposed Fifth Amendment to the DARA of Meads Crossing or amendment to the community village zoning code?
Yes, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. As developer of Meads, I share the concerns. I would note that we could have had a standard of 150 square feet or less, and we backed that down because of that concern. And I would also note that it is, we have a set of shed guidelines that we've given to the city for their review and comments. And so it's in our best interest, and it's in the HOA's best interest to use this very discriminately. And from that perspective, our window is, as the developer, is limited. So, you know, certainly within the next year and probably sooner than that, get up to 75% occupancy, the HOA elects their own board, and then it's up to them to self-police. But they have to do it subject to the rules that we have in place. That's why we want this in place now.
Right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I would note that we do support, we thank you for these two pieces of legislation.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to provide input? All right. With nothing else, I am going to close both public hearings at 7:41 PM. Let it be noted in the record. And we shall move on for a presentation sewer planning update from Brian Lubinow, engineer from CDM Smith, who represents the city. Mr. Lubinow, I'll hand the floor over to you, sir.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to come back and give you another update on where we are with the wastewater compliance situation at the treatment plant and with the wastewater system. I think I was last here in August of, of last year, so it's been a while. Okay. So what I plan to go over is just review some information that we presented the last two times that I was here, the first one being in March of 2020 and the last time in August, as I mentioned. And then kind of focus on two main things, just where, what have we accomplished since then? And then where we plan on going as we were working with MDE to get back into compliance with the wastewater treatment plant. So just as a reminder, and, and Lee, for you, who, this is, a lot of this is new or maybe it's completely new, so I'll kind of back up a little bit and cover some things that we covered last time. So first of all, the wastewater treatment plant, originally built in 2000, was upgraded in 2016 for enhanced nutrient removal, that's ENR. And that was part of, or as part of the MDE's Bay Restoration Program. So that was funded through the state. We worked through the planning and the design of that through, in the 2010, 11, into construction, completing construction in 2016. All that was done under a consent agreement with the state. Towards the end of that, we realized the project was, was a bit behind schedule. And there were also some exceedances of the consent agreement limits that had been established during the course of the construction and soon thereafter. So the city started receiving correspondence from the state with indications of penalties associated with those, that the delay is, as well as the exceedances of the limits. Initially, those were in the order of $80,000 was being talked about. You know, that staff and got our attention and, and the engine, and our help. We worked with MDE and had a number of conference calls, exchanged a bunch of letters, worked through some, some errors, some miscommunication, and eventually got that penalty down to about $27,000. So you probably discussed that several meetings ago, and then that, that penalty was ultimately paid to the state. By payment of that, that closed the consent agreement. So that, the consent agreement for the ENR upgrade was closed in 2021. That doesn't mean necessarily that our issues at the treatment plant are completely behind us. There have been annual exceedances of total nitrogen and total phosphorus ever since the plant was completed. And I'll go into a little bit more about kind of why we think that is and what we're doing to fix it. But just know that those are annual load limits that are placed on the plant. And those float, those limits move based on the flow that the plant receives. So the more water that makes its way to the plant, number one, the harder it is necessarily to treat it, but also the higher that, that limit can be. So my last bullet point there on wet weather, wet weather considerations, it's, it's those, that additional flow that finds its way into the sewer system, not from residential or industrial or commercial sewer, that we believe is, is really the driver for the difficulties at the plant in meeting, consistently meeting the permit limit. The plant generally meets their limit, it's just when we have these high flows due to storm events like, like you saw last week, that's when we have those struggles.
Brian, real quick, before you move on, in the last 10 years, I know it's a floating limit, but how often has the state changed those limits in the past 10 years on municipal sewer?
Yeah, so the, the current MPDS permit is 2018. Every five years, you have a new permit. So that's the permit that established the, the limit that you're currently under. The previous permit was 2013. That was the permit that essentially said, when your plant upgrade is complete, you have to meet these new limits. And those new limits and the old permit are the same as they are in the 2018 permit. And they're all based on, TMDL is established by the state, all part of the model for the Chesapeake Bay. So it's, it's basically a, an allowance that, that gets plugged into the model. It says you're allowed to introduce this, this many pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus into the bay. The floating aspect is the fact that for your permitted flow, which is 1.1 million gallons per day, let's just say for sake of argument, like, they'll, they'll say 100 pounds you're allowed for that amount. If you get half the flow to your plant, you're only out, allowed to discharge 50 pounds. And on the other side of that, if you get twice as much flow as you're permitted, it's still only 100 pounds. So now you have to treat to twice as tight of a limit. So that's what they mean by floating. It floats to a point and then it's capped. The problem becomes primarily with the wet weather in that when you have wet weather, it's true that the, the influent concentrations to the plant are reduced, but it doesn't make it necessarily any easier to meet the, the limits, the concentration limits that, that the plant has to meet. So now you have all this flow, and generally, you're discharging about the same concentration, but now you're discharging two, three, maybe as much as 10 times the amount of flow that you would be otherwise. So that's why the, the sewer collection system and the tightness of that system and all the stormwater flow or, you know, groundwater flow that gets in there can cause real problems for the plant.
Thank you. Sure.
So speaking of the sewer collection system, it's primarily newer sewers, any development that's been done since the 70s or 80s would all be PVC pipe. Older portions of the city are terracotta that haven't been replaced to date. So it's that terracotta pipe generally that is more susceptible to leaking many, many, many joints that, you know, the pipe is more brittle, can crack, get flows, groundwater flows in through cracks or joints in the pipe. And, you know, we have lots of evidence of that older piping being the, the areas where we see most of this flow getting into the system.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And I'm not sure who may be able to answer. During Main Street, when it was like, when they redid that, and I think they sleeved or did some internal working for the terracotta?
Correct.
Like, what percent of existing terracotta, is there an estimate that may have been?
That's a really good question. So, yeah, you're right. The Main Street was almost completely terracotta, and it was all lined ahead of Main Street. It was a city project ahead of the state, Main, uh, Streetscape project. We are, we've been ongoing, the Public Works Department has been surveying all the manholes in the city, because honestly, the answer to your question is, we didn't know. So they've been doing a survey to confirm the areas where they thought the terracotta was, and that's about 80% complete.
The survey, you say?
The survey, yes. So then, once that is complete, we'll have a better handle on that, what that number is.
Thank you.
If I had to throw a guess out there, and I think I saw Kevin was on, he might be able to put a guess out there as well, but I'm gonna, I'll guess something like 25% of the system is terracotta. Kevin, I don't know if you have a wild guess to make at that?
He may not be.
Okay.
The 25 of the, of the whole system is terracotta, and what percent of that 25% may have been lined?
Oh, um, yeah, we lined, oh, how much did we line? Maybe 1,000 feet in that project? So, I don't know, 10, 20%, something in that, I'm guessing, but...
That's part of the reason for the survey is to get those numbers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I've listed some flows there. Minimum flow, you'll see at the plant is about 0.4 MGD. And that matches pretty well with the typical average day water demand for the system, and your users are essentially the same for the water demand as they are for the wastewater system. So, you know, that's on a dry day, where we've had a continued run of dry weather, and we don't really have any groundwater infiltration. When you factor in the wet weather storm flows on an average basis over the course of the year, the average flow to the plant is somewhere between 0.9 and 1 MGD. It really depends on the year, whether it's a particularly dry or wet year. And just for interest here, I did look up the flow, Kevin had provided it to me last week with the hurricane coming through, storm coming through, it was seven and a half MGD the plant discharged from the first of September. So you can see, I mean, that's almost a 20 times factor from minimum to maximum of, of flow that's being treated at the wastewater plant that's not really from residential or commercial or industrial wastewater.
Brian, if I may, the, the maximum daily flow that you're talking about with respect to the storm, is that the maximum amount the system can handle period, or is that just what was registered on that particular instance?
Right. So that was what the plant discharged that day. The, there were sanitary sewer overflows that day, which we estimated to be approximately half an MGD. Those, there were two locations that had sewer overflows. So there are a series of, you know, pump stations ahead of the plant, and, you know, that's kind of where the, the limit comes in, at those pump stations and upstream sewers.
Thank you very much.
Sure. So the, the approach that we've taken to date and that we continue to take moving forward is to really attack this issue at those two fronts, one being the INI in the collection system, and then the other one being improvements at the plant to, to further improve and become more efficient in the treatment there, that we can handle these higher flows and we can improve the systems there to tighten that up, avoid the upsets that have occasionally caused some, some disruptions at the plant. So as I mentioned, we've been working with MDE since, well, I guess since, since the beginning of the ENR planning, but really on this particular topic, since the end of the ENR construction, through the negotiations on the consent agreement closure, as well as looking forward on the, how we get back into compliance. So in all those letter writing back and forth, in every case, I believe, we would, we would request a, a meeting or a conference call with MDE to kind of talk over this, to, to see what the best approach, and we wanted their input, we wanted to do this together. And that ultimately resulted in the conference call on August 2nd, where we pretty much laid out what I've said so far and what I'm about to tell you about our plan. And, and they asked for, kind of at one of the end results of that meeting, was their request for what we've termed a wastewater compliance plan. So myself and Kevin and Jim worked on that, that plan, which was kind of as I just laid out, focused at the wastewater plant as well as at the, in the collection system, addressing that INI. And that was sent to MDE on September 3rd. And that's, that's really gonna just be the start of ongoing communication with, with MDE as we continue to work through this issue that may potentially result in another consent agreement to facilitate making these improvements and to keep everybody on a path towards, towards compliance. So I just wanted to jot down a few bullet points here. The, the plan that we submitted has more detail on this and has some more schedule-type information, but I pulled some items out of that plan to highlight our progress to date, as well as the next steps and where we're headed. So as far as progress to date, I wanted them to be aware that, you know, we haven't been avoiding this issue. We've been meeting generally, I would say monthly, for the last couple of years, actually, on, on this plan. We've worked through the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Planning that was related to Tonton Crossing, and that, that had amendments to, to make that project a reality. We continue to work on a wastewater capacity management plan that will be submitted later this month. As I mentioned, there's the sewer system survey, which is about 80% complete. And what, what's really exciting about that is, since we started that, it's, the data is being collected just in handwritten sheets by Department of Public Works. And, and I asked, I've been asking, well, what are we gonna do with all this information? How are we gathering this all? And Dan and Jacob and Kevin came together and are developing a GIS from, you know, themselves, ground up, using open source software. And it's, we had a, a call a couple of weeks ago, and it's really exciting what those, what, what Dan is doing with that information. So it's, it's really gonna be the start of a, of a new system for the city's use. And I think as you get used to it, and I'm sure you're probably used to using the county's GIS system, I think that's gonna be a great tool for the city, not only for the sewer department, but for other items moving forward.
Brian, could you?
Yeah.
Just remind me what GIS stands for?
Oh, yeah. Graph, our Geo, no, you got me. Geographical Information System.
Thank you very much.
So it's, you know, it's information on a, on a geographical basis. So all of the, when they're doing their sewer surveys, they are collecting GPS coordinates of all the manholes and then collecting other data about the manhole, about the sewer sizes coming into and out of. So then all that data is, is available. It can potentially then be built out where you could provide information on repairs that are done or a cer, on a certain section or condition. If you televise a certain section, you could, you could upload that right to the system so that all that information that's stored in Department of Public Works staff heads on, oh, this is, this is behind that, this manhole's behind that tree, or we replaced that back in 84, all that information then gets stored in one place. So it's, it's a pretty exciting tool.
And one quick follow-up, if I might, Brian, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Remember, a couple of years ago, we had agreed to purchase some leak detection sensors? And is that the sort of information that will also be fed into this?
Yeah, we, we actually had that exact same comment. We were kind of thinking about, well, how, where do we next go with this? And yeah, so you could put all of those locations in there. You could potentially bring the data that, that they collect into there, so you could see, see that information all in one system. But yeah, definitely the location, you know, that when you're, when you have new development where you're asking developers to provide those new sensors, you could show where you have pockets where you, maybe you don't have as much coverage, so, yep.
Even areas that, you know, might be of a consistent problem or something?
Sure.
Awesome. That, thank you very much. That, thank you very much.
Sure. Next item I just wanted to bring up, the O'Brien Avenue Bridge. There was some sewer replacement that was necessary to get the footings in for that bridge, and that actually resulted in some pretty amazing reductions of flow from that area. So we, we clearly repaired, kind of by, by chance repaired some sewer there that was a source of a lot of INI, and that's what then clued us in to look in that area in a little more detail. So it's, it's what we've been calling the Meadowbrook Interceptor, so the interceptor that runs along the creek that, that bridge goes over as it heads towards one ninety-four. And, so we did a, that interceptor, we cleaned and televised it last summer, and now we're in design of rehabilitation of that, which is gonna consist both of replacement and of lining, similar to what we did at the, the Baltimore Street Sewers. So those, the design of the replacement portion is about ninety percent complete, and that'll be going out to bid later this year. We also had a flow monitoring study, and the idea of that is, you know, placing temporary flow meters throughout the system to get an idea of where you see the biggest jumps in flow during wet weather events. So that was, that was last summer, and the results of that flow monitoring study with the, the survey of where we have terracotta are together gonna be used to develop a plan to say, okay, well, here's all the, the terracotta, which do we think we need to line or replace? And developing a plan and a schedule for doing that. Because ultimately, I, I believe that's where you're headed, is the need to, to address all of those to get this INI out of the system. Well, I shouldn't say get it out, but greatly improve it. We also have a, we, we had a pilot study, and we looked at a couple of inline analyzers at the plant, so basically sensors within the treatment system itself to try to optimize the chemical addition process and optimize the treatment process. We got a couple of proposals, had a little bit of sticker shock, and had some more discussions, and, and feel like that those analyzers probably aren't worth the, the dollars for installation as well as maintenance, but that's another step that we went through. And then finally, although it's not really directly a, an item to drive towards compliance, we're just starting construction of one of the chemicals that's used at the plant for nitrogen removal, is, it's called micro C. They currently receive that in totes, and it's pretty expensive per gallon when you receive it that way. So we're, we designed and are in process of construction of a bulk storage tank, so it will come and the chemical will be delivered on a truck at a much cheaper rate per gallon. And it'll allow the city to save money there and utilize them in, in better ways to, to get back to compliance. So those are the highlights of, of kind of what, what we've been up to over the last year or two on this subject. Next steps, a lot of this I've already referred to, but the Meadowbrook Interceptor, we'll finish the design of that, we'll move into bidding and construction next year, hopefully. We have the Sewer System Rehab Planning, so that's the, as we have the results of the flow monitoring study, and we have the results of the survey, we'll be able to go through and decide what needs to be done next, and, and develop a long-range plan for, for dealing with the INI. We do know that there's, what I'm, what I'm referring to is Phase One of the CIPP sewer lining, that's coming up. We know we want to line the remaining portions of the Meadowbrook Interceptor, as well as a few other targeted lines in the city. So that, we hope to move that into design and construction next year. I mentioned the, the micro C bulk storage tank construction, and that'll be getting going here later this month. We also, another chemical that's used at the plant is ferric chloride, that's used for total phosphorus removal, and we have a plan to look at different doses and different chemicals for that purpose. To a degree, the more ferric chloride you add, or the more coagulant you add, you can really drive down your phosphorus, but at some point, that becomes, you, you kind of reach a limit, where you're spending more money on the chemical, but you're not really getting a whole lot more removal. So we're trying to find that point, and we're trying to balance, balance the, the amount of chemical added and the benefit, whether it be through reduced total phosphorus, as well as reduced liability to the city because of, you know, driving it closer to compliance, as well as looking at different chemicals, maybe there's another chemical that does a better job. You're aware that there's, the, the de-watering upgrade is underway, so a new sludge de-watering building at the plant, that's gonna allow them to treat to a hyd, remove more liquid from the sludge, which reduces the nutrients that head back around to the front of the plant. It'll capture those nutrients in the sludge rather than having it circle back to the front of the plant. So that's, that's ongoing. And then, the final item was, I just termed as the redundancy evaluation. There have been a few instances where a valve goes, is, fails, or a pump fails, for whatever reason, and it's especially with, since COVID, that supply times just have, have really be gone way up. And so taking a closer look at, at the amount of spare parts and redundancy of facilities at the plant, so that they have the right items in, in stock in hand, so that if something comes up, they're able to more quickly get that process back and running, and again, avoid those upsets that can lead to non-compliance.
When do we expect to have the new de-watering system online?
The, the contract is through, I believe, it's May, or maybe it's April of next year. There have been, again, like I just mentioned, delays, the building, the latest I've heard is the building that's gonna house that equipment is due to be, arrive in February. So it, it might be a little bit delayed, but I would say the middle of next year.
Okay.
So I guess the last thing I will say, and I'll open it up for any other questions you might have, but this statement you see on the screen is what we came up with as far as the, the narrative to introduce our plan to the, to the state, and, and let them know that we've been, we understand the issue, that we've been working on it, and that we continue to do so, you know, with their, with their cooperation. So this was the narrative that we used to introduce that, so. I guess if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, members of council, do you have any questions for Mr. Lubinow while he's here this evening?
Or Kevin, I'm not sure if you're there, if you have anything else to add, or Jim?
I am here now. I have my mic.
Great.
Is there anything of particular priority that you feel that we should proceed with before any of the other concerns that you've laid out, going into next year?
The, the INI, the, the plan for the rehab of, of the sewers, I think, would be top of that list. That's, you know, we've been, the flow analysis needs to happen, the flow study analysis, and then complete the survey. But that's something that is gonna require your input, obviously. This is, there are gonna be significant capital expenditures. The city is gonna need to decide how aggressive they wanna be in tackling this. You know, there's gonna be a, a price tag to all that work, and coming up, balancing that with the need for compliance at the plant, so, yeah. There's some decisions to be made there.
Thank you. We are trying to include these compliance-type projects in our project list, our, call it wish list for our Recovery Act funding. Some of, we already have some projects that are budgeted, such as the reconstruction of Roberts Mill Road, that's going to replace this, the section of terracotta sewer line as part of that project. In just discussions this afternoon with Public Works Department, we have identified another project that we probably should do sooner rather than later, that being a similar project for Broad Street. The sewer apparently, from the segment that we're going to rebuild in Roberts Mill Road, turns and comes down Broad Street to where we had the, the sanitary sewer overflows with heavy rains. So we may try to develop a project to do Broad Street, right on the heels of Roberts Mill Road. Again, just, we're, we're trying to focus on compliance-based projects and try to prioritize those with what we, with the money we're getting from the Recovery Act. So, and that'll be ongoing for the next, the next couple of weeks, I think at least. We do have a meeting coming up with Councilwoman Foster later this month, but we are working to prioritize those, and I'm sure we'll be pulling Brian in to review our list and, and add or subtract as, as a, as from the engineering perspective.
Yeah, that's a good point. Jim brings up the Roberts Mill Road section, we've applied for state funding for that for the past several years, for both the water, sewer, and storm systems in that road. Never have, have we been successful in getting loan funding for all three in the same year. So the project has, has remained in that planning stage since then. But yeah, that's, that's one that we, we understand the limits of, we kind of, yeah, we, it's, it's well-planned, just needs the funding.
Do you have a guess on the INI benefit of that Roberts Mill project? How much do you, how much INI do you expect to eradicate from that system?
Yeah, we, if I remember correctly, as part of the permit application, we, we gave that estimate, we provided an estimate, I can't recall it, but I can certainly get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, we used, I believe we used the estimate from the, the bridge construction. We've used that for estimating the, the portion that, the INI we would remove in the upcoming Meadowbrook Interceptor work, and then I think we also used that for the Roberts Mill Road as well. Conservatively, we, we kind of think, like I said before, that we got really lucky with that bridge project and the sewer, so we've ratioed that down as far as what we think we can remove in future projects, but that's what we used, and yeah, I'll get that for you, but I don't have it tonight.
Okay. So with Broad Street, do you, is that terracotta line currently running down Broad Street from Roberts Mill to East Baltimore?
Yes.
Yes.
Nearly all the way.
Okay.
Yeah, those, those areas that where the overflows occurred are generally, you know, they don't have a whole lot of upstream contributing area to them. They're not major interceptors with hundreds or thousands of homes connected upstream. They're generally, you know, pretty small segments of the sewer, so. I say that as, as it's, as it's a good thing, right? And that it's not a ton of length that you would need to address to get.
But it highlights a major problem with that line.
With, yeah, with that line, and, and, yeah, with that center old part of town where a lot of the terracotta is focused.
You know, have we ever lined any of that pipe on Broad Street before, or is it just the original terracotta from?
Just the original terracotta.
Okay.
Yeah, the only sections that have been lined, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Kevin, but the, the Baltimore Street project, and then some portions on Mill Avenue, behind Mill Avenue.
Behind Mill Avenue, and during that Mill Avenue project, also a section from Roberts Mill Road to Bum Gardner, behind Roth, along the stream.
That's right, yep. So there's really just been those two projects the city has done for lining?
Now, we refer to lining as opposed to cured-in-place, is that the same process?
Yeah, right, there are, there are a number of technologies. What we've used, what you've used is cured-in-place pipe, CIPP. So it's, you know, it's like, it's a bag that gets inserted into the sewer that's filled with a resin, and then that resin gets heated and cures in the place in the pipe, and it essentially becomes the pipe. There are older technologies, when we say lining, that were a, a pipe is actually more like pulled through, and, and those, the problems with there was you, you lost a lot of cross-sectional area, because it was a thicker wall, this, the, the CIPP is a thinner wall. There are other technologies as well, different cure techniques. A lot of the other technologies are more applicable to larger systems, like where maybe you have a thirty-six or a forty-eight inch pipe where you can get in and you can, physically get a person in there to rehabilitate it. So that's not something that you would be looking at, so more than likely, you'd, you'd be looking at more CIPP.
Okay. Any other questions from council here? Okay, any other input from Kevin, or Jim, or Brian?
I guess I just one last item, this is where, had Jay been here, I would have tossed it over to him for a little input, but I, I mentioned early on that this may work its way into another consent agreement, so obviously you, as well as he, will be, would be very involved in that process, but that's some, that's a, a potential outcome of our ongoing communication with MDE.
All right. With that, thank you, Mr. Lubinow.
Thank you.
As he gathers his things, next we're going to have our Economic Development Director, Jay Mishi, telling us about a community development block grant that he would like council's participation in. Mish, I'll hand it to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan and I practiced this sharing my screen thing today, so I hope that it will go as well tonight as it did this afternoon. Well, we're not starting out that way. I'm gonna give it one more try. There we go. I am cheating, and I actually also have the meeting on YouTube on a different screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yes.
Not just me?
I see you both.
Okay, I see me behind you.
Great.
All right. The Community Development Block Grant is a federal program, it's one of the oldest, most flexible grant opportunities that we have. It was started in nineteen seventy-four, and it's been amended and updated a few times since then. It's administered nationally by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they are tasked with achieving three national objectives. Activities that benefit low and moderate income people, especially focused on housing and water-related infrastructure. Prevention or elimination of slums or blight, there are pretty specific criteria about what CDBG money can do for slum and blight, and HUD strongly prefers that anything cleared or alleviated be replaced by housing for low and moderate income people as well. And lastly, is to address an urgent threat to health or safety. I find that one kind of challenging to define, since there's a specified application time, and your need can't be very urgent if it has to wait for the application period. There are two ways that a place can get CDBG funds. You can be an entitlement community, that's typically the principal city of a metropolitan statistical area, or a major urban county. And this year, HUD is giving about eight million dollars to Maryland's Department of Housing and Community Development, that DHCD is going to give to non-entitlement communities like Tonnentown. No matter which national objective a project is designed to achieve, overall, CDBG has to benefit low and moderate income individuals. When the CDBG program first started, some governments were directing money to wealthy areas, and it wasn't helping to alleviate poverty or improve America's housing stock. And as a result, Congress instituted strong rules that required CDBG money to overall benefit LMI people. benefit LMI people. What is LMI? The thresholds for low and moderate income vary based on where you live. It would be pretty unfair to use the same income benchmarks for Bel Air and Tawny Town. To be low-income, you have to have less than 50%, or earn less than 50% of the area median income. And then for moderate income, it's between 50 and 80%. There is also a calculation for very low income, but it doesn't come into play in our discussion. The overall benefit has to be to LMI people, and overall means that 70% of the people who benefit from a CDBG-funded project have to be LMI. Annually, the federal government collects income data and sends it to the states. We are part of the metropolitan statistical area east of here, and that's sort of to our benefit when calculating AMI. The generic median family income is considered to be $105,100. So in theory, the moderate income range for our area is $52,000 to $84,000, and low-income is a family that earns below $52,000 annually. There are specific numbers, so HUD will look at your house and how many people are in it and calculate, you know, whether or not you qualify as LMI based on household size, but these are sort of reference figures that I wanted to give to you. Citywide, Tawny Town is not 51% LMI, which speaks well for our residents, but when it comes to, you know, what we're discussing tonight, that means we can't use CDBG money for something like a wastewater treatment plant that benefits everyone. If more than 51% of our population were LMI, then we could use it for something general, but that is not the case. We can still apply for CDBG money for specific LMI areas of town. There's a survey that the Department of Housing and Community Development supplies to us, and we mail it to the addresses that would benefit from a project. The head of household lists the total income and the total number of individuals, and if more than 70% of the addresses in that area make less than 80% of the area median income, the project's eligible. We have a 20 to 20, 24 capital improvement program. There are some activities that I think are eligible based on flipping through it. The area around Fairground Village and behind Kenny's is the capital improvement project, project that's most likely to qualify for CDBG funding. The scale of the project isn't immediate, immediately obvious. It could be a stormwater management plan for the entire area. It could be installation of storm drain inlets on Grand Drive, which is the, the project that's specifically listed. It could be a comprehensive storm management project. It could even include property acquisition. Any of those things are eligible under CDBG guidelines, as long as the people who benefit are LMI. The maximum grant that the state of Maryland will give to one applicant is $800,000, and the application deadline is October 8th at 2:00 P.M. In order to even apply for CDBG, though, there are some things that you as the mayor and council need to do. They're accountability-related, and they're designed to make sure that CDBG money doesn't end up where it doesn't belong. We're obligated to adopt a citizen participation plan. DHCD and HUD want to know that these funds are going where residents want them and not just where you or I might want them. We have to hold a public hearing before the application is submitted. For us this year, that would have to be your October workshop. In future years without a pandemic, and when Jim has had a full staff for more than two months, we'll expect to hold that hearing in September or even August. You must pass an authorizing resolution that specifies the amount of money that staff is authorized to apply for, and you also have to acknowledge in that resolution that if we use the money for a prohibited purpose, we have to pay the amount back. If we do any CDBG project that involves acquiring homes and displacing people, we have to provide new housing. It's a boilerplate plan that HUD supplies that I'd like you to adopt with the knowledge that displacement and relocation are, are beyond our administrative capacity. There's no way that we are engaging in an activity that's going to trigger that responsibility, but HUD requires it to be done. There's a department and suspension document, so we don't hire anybody that the state won't give money to for reasons of past misdeeds. We need to hold a second public hearing while the project's underway. If the town meets certain thresholds of non-English speakers, there are different levels of support we have to provide, and there's a formula that DHCD gives us, so essentially, I go through census results and say yes, no, yes, no. Finally, we have received CDBG money four times before, so we are supposed to provide information on those to DHCD if we can. They were in 1994, 95, 96, and then in 2002. Realistically, I think that they're far enough in the past that if our records aren't maybe sufficient to answer the questions, I don't think it's going to be held against us. I'm happy to take your questions in a minute, but if you're satisfied, I would like you to adopt the documents that I just talked about and that I think are in your packet at the voting meeting on Monday. I'm anticipating having the application completed and available by September 20th. It must be available for public inspection, and we have to take public comment on other projects that could be completed using CDBG funding. There are probably some others, but because we're not an LMI community, I think it's unlikely that an outside suggestion will be tailored narrowly enough to qualify. If you agree, and we go on this timetable, we would accept comments and suggestions until October 1st. I'll investigate them, and then at your October 6th workshop, I'd like you to hold a public hearing on the staff-developed application and on any comments or suggestions that were submitted to us. And if all goes well, we'll submit the application that Friday, incorporating any additional direction we've received from you. Oh, look, it turns out that I had the timeline right there. Even more than this particular project, though, it would be to our benefit if council adopted the documents. The plans are in effect for five years, like the citizen participation plan, the housing relocation plan, those things. So doing the administrative work now means that if we apply in the future, it'll be easier to do if we find an appropriate project. And that's what I have for you this evening.
All right, thank you, Miesha. I'll now ask members of council if they have any questions for our Economic Development Director this evening on what he's presented. Are we comfortable with what he is asking us to do? I don't see the documents in our binders.
We will have to add them for you. I don't see them either.
Okay.
From having reviewed it, I don't think they've made it in.
Okay. So without seeing the documents and just going off of what Miesha said to you, what is your comfort level on his request?
Well, I think, I mean, I don't mind starting the conversation, as long as it doesn't place undue restrictions on us. If we're able to garner some kind of assistance for LMI residents of the city, I think we should pursue that. I did have a question for you, Miesha, if, if you could. And if you don't know the answer to this offhand, that's quite all right. The, the previous funding that the city had received in 1994, 1995, 96, and 2002, do you happen to know what projects those were for specifically? I may have missed that, or I may have.
It did mention.
I, I, I just hurried through them. In 1994, it was for Main Street Improvement. 1995 was for accessible park restrooms. 1996 was for the annex renovations, and in 2002, it was for a feasibility study. These were supplied to me by DHCD. I don't have records that describe them. I can probably find them on E-Bridge or maybe in a vault, so I can't speak to the amount and so on and so forth.
That, that's all right. Thank you very much for that. And if I could just, I guess, a follow-up question to that. And, and Miesha, if you don't know this, and Jim, you might be able to speak to this, and again, if you don't know, that's quite all right. The previous instances of us seeking CDBG funding, were there any issues or complications that were manifested from us seeking those things? Anything that the city was unable to accomplish or anything that we had to make up for?
All before my time, I'm afraid.
It looks like the last time we received money was 19 years ago. So it's, I don't think anyone in this room was.
And I, I, I do recall that the, the annex renovation was, was, was done through this program because that was when Human Services occupied the building prior to it being the history museum.
Right.
That the CBDG money rehabilitated the bank into office spaces for a satellite office for Human Services.
And Jim, I mean, you're not aware of anybody who has at any point, you know, said that was the worst thing that we ever did, we should never have applied for that, 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 you know, it was, it was not something that they would not, not do again?
Only in an entitlement community. So I, I have not heard of any negatives for a community like us supplying for a specific project.
Thank you.
Other input from council? How do you feel? Okay.
We will add the documents to your packet and get that, notify you when they're out there.
Okay, very good. We'll bring it up for decision Monday evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Miesha. Have a good night. All right. Next, I'm going to ask members of council if they have any conflicts of interest on agenda items this evening.
Yes, sir.
So I'll say that although I do not have a single-family home in Meads Crossing, I am a Meads Crossing resident.
Okay. Very good. However, since what we're discussing applies to single-family primarily, it shouldn't conflict you a whole lot, but we are aware. Thank you for addressing that. Next, I'm going to ask if there's any public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. If what you want to talk about is not on this piece of paper, feel free to bring it up at this time.
Chris Tillman, owner and innkeeper at Georges of York Bed and Breakfast, and also president of the Tawny Town Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to talk a little bit this evening, I have a little statement I'm going to read regarding the post office. It has become a, kind of a pet project for us to look into, and we have been for probably a year or more, the possibility of replacing the post office here in town. It's, it's old, it's cramped, it's not very user-friendly, and is kind of a, to a growing community, it's kind of a black eye to have a, have a post office that still looks like a time machine, and you walk in and it's 1967. So with that, the Tawny Town Chamber of Commerce has embarked on a project for a new post office for this community. As you know, the existing facility is 60 years old or over and has, is far too small to handle the volume of mail for a community this size. The 21787 zip code encompasses almost 60 square miles, serves over 4,000 households and nearly 11,000 residents. Middle Street has become a daily bottleneck of traffic with the opening of the pet griming business next door, and the traffic has gotten worse. People talk about the parking issue in Tawny Town, well, here is one place where it actually exists. Often, the alley coming down the hill from A&W Meads is blocked with vehicles that are parked for postal business. Middle Street itself is narrow and is a true hazard for pedestrians. There's a lot of speeding and people pulling in and out of parking spaces, and I've nearly personally had very close calls with people and with other vehicles in that street. Parked vehicles make it difficult to see oncoming traffic when either existing alley, from either alley adjacent to the post office, either coming down the hill or the one right next to the building. Parked vehicles make it difficult to see oncoming traffic. It's difficult and dangerous for postal customers to use the facility. Postal vehicle parking and loading area in the rear of the building is actually worse. There are vehicles parked everywhere, the pavement is barely deteriorated, and it's difficult for the large trucks making pickups and deliveries to get to the loading dock. They either have to come in by Napa and turn around, or try to negotiate that tight turn and tight alley next to the building. For the past year, we've been speaking with the local postmaster and have been trying to get a meeting with his superiors to discuss the need for a new facility here. Our attempts have been unsuccessful to date, so we have reached out to Congressman Harris' office for assistance and have provided his office with pictures and descriptions and, and what we feel needs to be done and why. The postal service has actually weighed in opposing a new post office, and this is where we seek help from the city, from the mayor and council. On behalf of the Tawny Town Chamber of Commerce and the postal customers of this community, I call on the mayor and the city council of Tawny Town to write to Congressman Harris' office under, under city letterhead and with all signatures, and request that his office get involved in looking to and achieving a new post office for Tawny Town. Other communities in our area are getting new post offices, such as Middletown and Boonsboro. There was a new post office built not long ago in Hagerstown. I think there was even a new one built in southeast Pennsylvania or somewhere in Adams or, or Southern York County. So there are new post offices being built, and the question is, why can't we have one here? With the growth of this community, it is imperative that we have the infrastructure to support it, and not only water and sewer, but a post office that's suitable as well. So thank you very much for your consideration of that. Also, while I'm here, I want to take a few minutes, I want to formally congratulate Jay Miesha for joining us here as the new Director of Economic Development. Jay, I never got a chance to formally say congratulations to you for your permanent installation as, as city manager, and to Daryl Hale, who is not here, but for his job on planning and zoning. And welcome to council. Council, Mr. Hand.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Mr. Mayor, I, I know it's not customary, but I have one question for Mr. Tillman. I know it's not customary during public comments, but this is, I guess I'm kind of curious about one thing.
Proceed.
Thank you. So you said the USPS said that they did not want to build a new post office.
That, they have, they have responded to Congressman Harris' inquiry with a letter saying that they are not in favor at this time.
Yeah, I mean, is there any reasoning that they gave?
I do not, I do not know. I just got that information myself several hours ago today.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Who else would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, I'm back again this month to nag at you a little bit again. I want to talk about the request I made that you set up a nonprofit foundation to preserve these buildings in Tawny Town. I feel that Tawny Town has slept long enough, it's time to wake it up, and part of the work has already been done to do this. We have 21 buildings that need attention, and as I said, Georges of York has set the goal standard, and I think we need to keep it up with every one of our historic buildings The reason, one reason to do this is because it says to the public, we are serious about waking this town up. We are serious about our history, and we are serious about protecting it, protecting our past, and we have very good, four very good reasons to do it, but I'm not going to go into that right now. The other reason to set up a nonprofit foundation is if we bring in or make any money, it seems silly to pay it out in taxes. I want to revolve it, get a revolving fund for the nonprofit so we can use any money we make. We're going to need, if we do this, we're going to need two employees. We're going to need one to be the bean counter, to pay the bills and so forth, take care of our money. We need another one to see that these historic buildings are preserved in the proper way. You can't take a 100-year-old building like our farm we had in Pennsylvania, this log house that was 50 by 50. You can't go down to Lowe's and buy a 200-year-old timber to put in there. You have to find a barn or something that's being dismantled. And the same way with the bricks for the. And the same way with the bricks for these houses. You can't put brand-new books, bricks in there. You're going to have to look around for old buildings that are being dismantled. And that is the rules of the National Council of Historic Preservation. I know what I'm talking about. I've gone through this before. Now, another reason to do this is, oh, I'm going to stop there. It's going to take money to do this and I know it's scaring you to death. I'm willing to be the person that goes out and raises the first one or $2 million. Two places I will ask right away is the Ford Foundation. Now at Dearborn, owned by the Fords in Detroit, Michigan. They have a village behind Dearborn Inn and they have a replica, a Barbara Fritsch House there. So they know about preserving history and they've done it. They have about eight buildings there that they have made duplicates of. So that's one place I would ask for money. The other place is I would ask Warren Buffett's children. They were given millions of dollars about 30 years ago, maybe more. They have to give it away every year. And they were given this money by their parents, mostly their mothers. Their mother urged this to teach these two boys and their daughter to be responsible with all this money that their father is raising. So I would ask, I would write the letters for Tawnytown and I would be willing to raise this money for Tawnytown. And that brings up another big problem. I have no title. I have no, um... I have no title. I have, I'm just a citizen. For me to go ask for somebody for a million bucks sounds kind of hokey. So we'd have to resolve that. Either I would write the letter and you would send it or whatever. There is no problem that can't be solved if we put our heads together a little bit. Now, once we get this nonprofit foundation set up and we get bringing in money, it'll be time then to get these trucks out of Tawnytown. Once again, that will happen when we say, we are serious. We are a historic town and these buildings are being destroyed and shaken down. So that's all I'm going to say next month. I'll give you a month off because I have something else to talk about, a different subject next month. So please consider this about setting up a nonprofit foundation. I talked to the Tawnytown attorney. He said it's easy. He said he set up three. But the ones he set up were only for raising a few thousand dollars. And you'd have to ask him, how much does it cost? Or how difficult is it to set up a nonprofit foundation that brings in big bucks? So we need to start thinking bigger. We need to start thinking upgrading instead of downgrading. Forget about all this rental stuff. Let's work with downtown and get it going. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items this evening? All right. With nothing else, we'll move along to our resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Up for introduction is ordinance 05-2021. This is the amendment to the community village zone pertaining to the sheds and outbuildings and DORs. Any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this ordinance in front of you? Okay, so this is slated to be introduced Monday evening. Up for adoption Monday evening, we're going to have ordinance 06-2021. This is the final budget amendment for fiscal year 2021. Any questions from the council on this ordinance? Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. You said...
This is ordinance 06-2021.
Okay, I'm sorry. The wrong one. I have a question on the next one.
On the next one. That would be ordinance 07-2021. This is budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2022. And I open to the council if you have any questions or comments.
So I, I, Mr. Mayor, I have one and it's more of a, I guess, maybe not a question, but making sure that I'm seeing this correctly. The totals on both of these are $66,362. Now, is that by intent that these are supposed to somehow balance each other out? Or is that just a strange coincidence that it's $66,362?
That's by intent.
Okay.
The, the top is the revenues, the bottom being the expenditures.
Correct. Okay, thank you. I just like, wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
Okay. Other questions from council? All right. That will be up for adoption on Monday evening. And lastly, up for adoption Monday evening will be our monthly water allocation, this being for September of 2021. And again, I'll ask if you have any questions or concerns regarding the water allocations. Okay. With that, I will throw over to Mr. Weeper for a city manager report. Sir?
Okay. We touched a little bit on the first item as far as capital improvement program. We have made some updates particularly with the Public Works Department. So we've been reviewing water and sewer projects. And we've added to, from the draft CIP that we talked about, gosh, it's been over a year now. We have added a stormwater tab to that. And the prospective project there is the Riffles Lane to 194 storm drain that we talked about a little bit last month. That's been causing some issues for residents in that area. We're also working with State Highway to make sure that that inlet, the new drain, that this drain flows into is clear. But at any rate, we're focusing on those three because we do want to make sure we have our plan ready for our recovery act funds. We will need to, one of the earlier steps is going to be to provide a plan on how we're going to spend the money before we execute that plan. So we want to make sure that we are well-prepared for that in advance of the deadline. So that's kind of kick-started work on the capital improvement program again. Sewell annexation, quick update. We did have a meeting with the Sewells and their contract purchaser. And while we did pass the annexation agreement last month, they were not prepared to sign it. So they were, expressed that when it, when it came back through for their review leading up to last month's workshop, that they didn't have time to fully digest the changes that were in there. And they want to have some more time. They're basically looking for more commitment as far as water sewer capacity than was in the agreement. So that's kind of on hold right now. That's why we do not have an annexation, annexation resolution in your packets this month. Because until that agreement is executed, we're not going to go forward with the next step. Let's see. We've dabbled a little bit in some charter and code review. There's been some, there are a couple of properties on the market in the restricted general business district. And that's kind of brought that to our attention. Our economic development director has been fielding some calls of interest for properties in that district. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, this is a, a small strip of, of properties that was rezoned from residential to limited commercial use. I would say probably 15 to 20 years ago. It's the stretch between Merwin Drive and Fairground Avenue. So it's a very small district. It's basically properties that front East Baltimore Street. It doesn't go back beyond those properties. And the idea behind that zone was to allow some uses other than residential, but keep it kind of a low-key buffer sort of area between the residential district and the more intense commercial uses of the general business district. When we adopted that zoning district, we did not update the sign ordinance to speak to that district. So technically, the only signs that would be allowed in that district currently are those that would be allowed in any district in the city. That obviously is a problem since we're allowing commercial uses there. So we've been applying the downtown business district sign regulations to this district. So what's in the packet following my report here are a few changes related to this restricted general business district and some housekeeping changes to the sign code, mostly again relating to this district. So when the district was created, there was a relatively short list of permitted uses that was established. We would like to add a little bit of flexibility to, to the district by just allowing businesses with similar character and intensity, that line being added. And that gives, because we can't think of every potential business that might be out there that might be looking for a modest space like this. So this would give a little bit of flexibility so that it's not just, you know, A through L that's allowed. It could be something very similar to that that isn't specifically mentioned. So the idea would be keeping it that kind of low-key, local business type, you know, low-intensity use, but adding a little bit of flexibility. And the changes to the sign code, we'd like to update the zoning terminology that's there because it really doesn't match what's in the code. We have downtown business zone is what's in the code. It's really downtown business district. And I'd like to add restricted general business district to that because that is, the downtown district is similar in scale and doesn't allow like the high-intensity uses of the general business district. And I think as far as the character of the district, the restricted general business district is most similar to downtown. So rather than create a whole new list of sign regulations, I'm suggesting we just apply the downtown district to, regulations to the restricted general business district. So not looking for any action tonight, but just wanted to kind of float this for right now. What's in your packet? The, the changes are highlighted in yellow. Additional text is underlined. Deleted text is, is struck, struck through. So just a couple of changes, but it kind of tidies up the code with regard also to the sign ordinance. The regulations for what we apply to the general business district are just labeled commercial and industrial. So again, just for clarification, we'd like to make that match the actual district designations by calling it general business district and restricted industrial district. Just kind of a little housekeeping on that one. So we could, we could talk for hours about sign revisions, but I'm not going to do that to you. But I think the best way for us to move forward with some of these long overdue text revisions is just to, to piecemeal it and give you guys a little bit to think about at a time. I do have some questions pending with the city attorney that are related to some of these. Oh, and I almost skipped over one. We have been working to do a little bit more active enforcement regarding parking of trailers on city streets. We do get a lot of complaints about that. And the police department has been stepping up enforcement there. But the intent, the idea behind the ordinance really is to get people to stop, to not park trailers on the street for long periods of time. The code currently allows you to park a trailer for one hour, like a utility trailer or something like that, but it allows you to park a camper for 24 hours. So it's a little inconsistent and the chief has expressed interest in making that consistent. So we're suggesting just revising that to allow, to make it consistent to be 24 hours for parking of trailers on the street. We do need to look at some better enforcement mechanisms there so that if someone does get cited and they continue to park the trailer on the street. Currently, we have to issue three citations, wait 30 days if the citations aren't paid. And at that point, we can impound a vehicle. That's a lot to go through to get a trailer off the street. So we'd like to investigate that a little bit, but that's going to be more an issue to work with the city attorney on. But at any rate, please take a look at the yellow highlighted changes. If anybody has comments one way or the other, please let me know Monday night. If no one's opposed, we will come back in the near future with an actual draft ordinance to introduce. But in the meantime, it's just kind of food for thought. If anybody has any suggestions, comments, if you had heard any questions, concerns regarding either the restricted general business district or, you know, signage as relates to that district, please let me know. We can certainly consider any additional changes. But again, this has been something that's been sitting on the, the project chart for ages. So we're just starting to get into it. And with a couple of properties on the market in that restricted general business district, it seemed the appropriate time to kind of get rolling on that. So moving on to the next thing.
I'm sorry. Is it all right if I ask a, two questions on this?
Certainly, certainly.
So my first question, I noticed you mentioned you talked about redefining, or not redefining, but re, I guess, reclassifying or, or changing, you know, certain areas that's a zone to district. And so, first of all, am I correct in imagining that a district is like a subordinate part of an overall zone? And second of all, what are the benefits of changing something that is labeled a zone to a district?
The, just to be consistent with how they're presented in the city code. They are labeled as downtown business district, not downtown business zone. And for commercial and industrial zones, the code refers to them as general business district and restricted industrial district. So just, just making it consistent and calling it the same thing throughout the chapter.
All right. And then my, my other question has to do with the changes that you had talked about with the, the areas of business. Am I imagining that those changes are still going to be under the auspice of the overlay zones that we've previously enacted? Like that there's, there are going to be no contention or issue between previous overlay zones and then how this might be affected one way or the other by those overlay zones? Like there's not going to create some kind of inconsistency between them?
No. The, the only overlay that we have is community village and that's not applicable to this district.
That's not entirely true. We have the, in terms of zoning overlays, we have the cannabis dispensary overlay.
Adult entertainment.
And the adult entertainment overlay.
Right.
Thank you. Forgot about those. Thank you.
But they, they would supersede whatever else this does.
Okay.
And if I recall correctly, those are overlay in restricted industrial.
That's correct.
District only.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that anything that we, you know, might potentially change was not going to alter those overlay zones. Thank you very much for that.
Especially since both those overlays speak to distance from residences and this is kind of... And this is kind of a, a mix of residential, commercial in that district. I think it would be safe that that wouldn't be affected.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Good point, and I forgot about those more recent overlays.
You're welcome.
Other questions, concerns before Jim moves on to his next item? All right, Mr. Weeprich?
Just lastly, a quick update on Trevenian Terrace. Construction is still focused on the area around King's Drive. We did have some issues regarding the, the rainfall recently. There is a, you know, a pump, pumping solution going up during construction. There's a temporary pumping operation going on, and that was overwhelmed by the, the eight inches of rain that we got, as was most of our, most of our city. But we do have a date for the new water line that's being relocated. It's been tested, and it's going to be connected to the, to the system on a Saturday, on September 25th is the schedule. So we, we, the contractor worked with us and with the school to minimize disruption to Northwest Middle School. So the work's going to be scheduled for Saturday so that we don't have to have a half-day of school or anything like that for the middle school because we weren't able to make it happen before school started. So that's about it. As I said, you know, work really is, is kind of limited to that King's Drive area right now. But they are hoping to button that up within the next month. And that's about it for me.
All right, last chance for council. Have any questions for the city manager? All right, your departmental reports are also in front of you. I do want to add to that. I did watch this morning as they installed the new fountain at Roberts Mill. I encourage you, if you wish, once we're done, it's dark outside. I'm anxious to see what it looks like when it's all lit up. That's a great, great addition to that park and all the parks in general. But I encourage you, read over the departmental reports. And if you find you do have questions Monday evening, you have an opportunity to ask those. As stated at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Gallow, our city attorney, is not with us. Therefore, we will skip the legal report. We have no old business tonight, but we have new business. So our monthly financial report. I'll ask council if you have any questions, comments, concerns on the monthly financials. Okay, if all are satisfied, we'll move on to our accounts payables. Same question. Everyone is content?
Yes.
Very good. Next up, we have Fifth Amendment to the amended and restated Dara for Mead's Crossing. This is related to the public hearing we held earlier this evening with the intention of it being up for your approval on Monday evening. Is there any questions or comments regarding that amendment? Okay. Lastly, on Monday evening, I intend to ask for your approval to reappoint Mr. Bill Kennedy to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. His term ends this year. He has expressed interest in continuing to serve. Our Parks and Rec Director has also asked that he continue to serve. So Monday evening, we'll be asking for your confirmation on that. And lastly, has been requested by Parks and Rec, a ratification of the special event permit approval for Gettysburg Youth Soccer Club. Let me scroll. Very good. So this was an event that took place at Roberts Mill Park at the end of August. Because of the short timeframe, it was preliminarily approved by city staff, and it will simply be coming before the council for ratification. It has occurred. I believe it went off without a hitch. There were no major issues at all. So Monday evening, we'll be asking that you ratify that.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add that the event, as you said, did, did go off very well. Our Parks and Rec Director advised me today that unlike a lot of our activities in the park, this one was actually revenue positive. So we, we, you know, got some money for field rental. The organization also made a donation to our, our local soccer program. And the soccer program was also able to operate concessions during the event. So it was kind of a win for everybody.
Great. That's exciting. I did see on Facebook that it was occurring. I was very excited to see that, especially having more tournaments come to town. I know baseball's done it for a couple of years. Glad to see soccer bring some into town. And hopefully, other sports can follow suit. We can start getting even more use out of our beautiful fields and parks. All right. Is there any comment from the council on that? Good, because it already happened, so. Not that I don't care what you think, but in this case. Finally, we come to public comment for agenda items. If what you want to discuss appears on this piece of paper, now is your chance to say something. Okay. No one jumped up? That is all I have for the evening. So with that, I will ask if there is a motion from the council to adjourn for the evening.
Move to adjourn for the evening.
And a second, please?
Second.
All right, we do have the motion from Councilman Hand, the second from Councilman Haynes, all in favor of adjourning for the evening. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. See you all.